Is that good? Is that a good treat?
Always gotta look now where I'm at.
How you doing?
You?
I'm doing well. How's draft the commission?
Well, we managed, got a little bit done.
Just been a little bit on the white side.
Yeah, tonight, we were, we were sort of late too, which was good.
What does that camera show there?
Scott, do you have that time of that?
Yes.
And that was the 25th?
It is 25th.
I guess we lost. I was looking for one for the podium. I guess it doesn't exist. Did you get your hosting?
I have it at 6:30.
Are you guys all right? You guys right?
Who are you going to host him to?
Six. Six. Six.
Six, okay.
I'm not sitting in your spot.
Are you right? You guys right?
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like to encourage you to remain on the call but to also go to the township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log into our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meetings, Robert's rules will still apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for audio to be heard clearly. During the meeting, by those present online, only one person at a time speaks and they must be recognized by the chairman. Many people speaking at the same time combined with background noise makes meetings like this impossible to hear on Zoom. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to use the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized with the chat function, you must be either a presenter who is on the agenda or a resident or business owner in East Hemphill Township who wishes to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on to staff by the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via chat to speak. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violation of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending the meeting in person. All voting will be done by roll call vote to ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by a township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at a later meeting. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting main purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendants. Comments limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. And no action will be taken during public comment meeting for any non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. We ask for your patient understanding as we strive to continue serving the residents and businesses of township while fully complying with the social distancing requirements prescribed by our governor. So now we move on to the first segment for agenda. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge. Now the pledge.
Let your lead just do the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see it. So our first agenda, I am, I will turn this over to Chief Skiles and we have some good news to talk about.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing good.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all again, the board. Today is a day that's been six years in the making for me and we've joked about it a lot. This is the coveted 34th officer. So I appreciate this and that not working? I speak into it? Okay. Like I said, this is six years in the making. We've been, I've been begging you, jealing you, laughing with you about my 34th officer and tonight, we're gonna get him sworn in. So Brian Surgeon is 25 years old, almost 26. He currently lives in Berks County. For the past year, he's worked for Reading City Police. He's got a lot of experience up there in the past year and a half. And I was looking at Zoom and I think I see his father on Zoom and I would say that he's probably a proud father today because he is a retired officer as well from Berks County. So he gets to see his son be sworn in for the second time in about a year. Bryant attended Wilson High School and then Shippensburg University has his BS in criminal justice. He is joined today by his fiancee, I believe they're getting married in May. Lizzie's here with him today. Said before he was at Reading, he worked for Reading Public Schools as a security officer and he graduated from the Reading Academy in December of 2019. So we did a background investigation on him, Reading City, sad to see him leave and we were able to steal another very qualified officer from another jurisdiction, which I think speaks highly for our township in the way that we're respected here by the Board of Supervisors and by our residents. So Cindy, do you have the oath?
Scott has it, yes. Chief, if we could have you stand behind the podium and use a microphone, that way they'll show up on Zoom much better. Now if we could use the other microphone. LeBron, if you want to stand on the other side facing him, that way you'll be able to be seen on Zoom.
You want to wear a mask, but I've not given a mask, but microphone.
Perfect.
We got our, I think our six feet apart anyways here, six foot table here.
So if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian Surgeon.
I, Brian Surgeon.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I, as a police officer?
As I, a police officer.
For the East Hemphill Township Police Department?
The East Hemphill Township Police Department.
Will support, obey and defend?
Support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of East Hemphill Township?
The laws and ordinances of East Hemphill Township.
And that I will discharge the duties?
That I'll discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity?
The office of fidelity.
I will uphold, obey and enforce?
I will uphold, obey and enforce.
The laws without consideration?
Laws without consideration.
To individuals' race?
To individuals' race.
Color? Sex? Religious creed? Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation?
Age? National origin?
National origin?
Ancestry?
Ancestry?
Handicap?
Handicap?
Or disability?
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Nice to see your parents online too. I can kind of see them up there. There's a head wave back there so we could get your parents to watch this. It's quite a moment, so. Chief, it's back to you. You are coming to a good, a very good police department. We're very proud of everybody here. Obviously, we're coming from a situation that's a little bit different than what you're gonna find here. You've got a community that really loves and supports its police department here and really values what we do and a wonderful leadership with Chief Skiles and with our lieutenants and what we have here. We have a very good thing going and looking forward to having you join our team.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Well, that was the, probably the highlight of our meeting tonight.
Indeed it was.
Looking at our agenda. So next, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. And so with that, I will open up to consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there is one slight change to the meeting minutes that were distributed. They're sitting on your table. We swapped out the word Hemphill to, for East Petersburg.
So it's just what is highlighted in yellow has changed?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda besides that one change? Okay. Now entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the one change as noted. Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever is our second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. The ayes have it five, nothing. Next up, we have action items and for the first time in five or six years, we have no development services. So we will move on to board goals. And I don't know, Cindy, if you could share the board goals up on the screen too or? Everybody should have their board goals in their meeting packets too.
Diane, could you possibly share those? So fortunately, we had a few group meetings in the past week or so. So every time we had a meeting, we invited some input into those. So you have the changes thus far from the 2020 goals. Think that's the wrong one. It's the wrong one because it's the wrong one on the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that was the issue. I was hoping you'd be able to pull up the.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Let me send those to Diane.
Well, Cindy's looking for those goals. I didn't want to, I was tardy and I think Mr. LaFever, we were tardy for the public safety group in adding to what we've had in the past as I review that today. And there, there was one thing that I would like to see us add to the public safety working group. One that, once that gets up is that under fire services that with hiring the chief fire official, that we would by the end of the year outline a long-term plan for our fire departments moving forward. It's one thing that I didn't see on there when I reviewed it and we were tardy in that and I just would like to see us add that to the outline once it gets up.
Yeah, that's very.
Diane, they should be sent to you.
Okay, well, Ms. Garber is pulling those up. We don't have a big audience, but the whole purpose of us developing board goals and makes us unique among this township that are pretty much not aware of any other township that does this in the county is we set goals each year for our working groups and for our staff to strive for both the planning and operation of the township. And so that's what these goals represent. They're now up on the screen. Could we, Ms. Garber, could we expand that a little bit? Because for us right now, we are looking at that on the far screen. That's right there is pretty good. That's good. So if we can slowly pan down the admin and finance, the first couple were the same at this point. And, okay, right there is good. The other thing that we have added is number 14 and 15, which is update the manager's job description evaluation form and update the employee evaluation form. So there's gonna be some discussion. We did have a little bit of surprise where we talked to Ms. Switzer that she actually liked the valuation form that we as the board thought she would not like. So there's gonna be some discussion about the format and there's a desire to actually get a little bit more check the block format for the employee evaluation and get more, a little bit less subjective evaluation. So there's gonna be some work in those two items. The township website will be actually getting a refresh. There's gonna be a rollout of a beta which you guys will be able to see and we'll have an update on that. The board procedures emails and proof communication, that's ongoing. We adjusted number 10, the five-year East Hemphill Township Finance Plan that had said 10 years. But realistically, when you, five years is about as far as you can realistic look financially and have real projections. And that's actually Joe Robinson, our financial director, already has that at this point in place. And then the rest of these are routine roles of admin and finance. Ms. Garber, could you move any discussions on that one? And Mr. Bennett, do you have anything you want to add as a worker?
Okay.
Ms. Garber, you want to go to the next working group, please? Now I will turn this over to Mr. Weaver and to Mr. Bennett, whoever wants to talk about these.
I may need a little help here.
So we added number seven, which is the very last one.
Right, I think that's the only one. We're gonna try to work more closely with Hark in the coming year. We're also possibly looking at them to help us manage our parks, recreation programs on a, on a regular basis. Beyond that, everything that we had in place. We, you know, as far as park usage fees, we're always looking to that schedule, trying to keep it updated. The trail system is something that we've been working on for, for some time and we continue to work on. And then we're also looking to at some point create a community and citizen outreach advisory group to assist improving parks and recreation. We feel there's a lot of demand for that in the township and a lot of interest by the township residents. So we're looking for input from the community on that.
Okay. Just one quick, I think we all said for number five, for a master park plan, we were gonna discuss kind of piggybacking on the official map. So that's, there has been some progress, not necessarily through us, but from the township in general.
And number seven is, I mean, West Hemphill has had a very positive experience of having the recreation, Hark manage their parks in the facility. So it's definitely something for us to, I think, to explore. I think that's a good goal. Any discussion, the rest of the board?
Yeah, we were already ready to move into the Hark situation, but then COVID hit last year.
Yeah.
So if that kind of stopped.
COVID messed a lot of things up last year, didn't it?
It did. We've been using that excuse for years.
I would just like to add on or thank the Park and Recs Committee and also just emphasize number three. The trail system and trails really are very important to the community. We get a lot of compliments on that for what we did with the park. It's heavily used. And the more we can do in that area, the better. And I think number six is absolutely a tremendous idea to get the community more involved and more invested in what we're doing. So.
Ms. Garber, could you move on to the next section? Okay, next up we have is plan development. I don't know if you want to roll with that one or? I'll talk about the official map part, but.
Okay, great. Okay, so looking at that meeting with developers and the planning process, I think that's important that we remain business friendly. And we provide guidance, opinions on what will be accepted, what won't be accepted. We do not want our business leaders and businesses wasting money on items that will never come to pass. That's important. Looking at our saldo and our zoning ordinances for review, we're constantly doing that. The sign ordinance comes to mind right off the bat. Develop an official map and I'll turn that over to you, Scott.
So we are, we, we're probably a couple of months away from adopting an official map. That will complete our planning tools for the township and make us one of the few township that has all of our planning tools under 10 years old. So we will have a subdivision, land development ordinance, a zoning ordinance, a comprehensive plan and what's called an official map, which are all the tools that were required to have and should have as a municipality for planning and operating this township. The official map basically serves as a roadmap for transportation improvements, recreation improvements, parkland, stormwater improvements or MS4 requirements and provides a graphical plan for people to quickly see what we're proposing and what the plans are for the township for the next decade ahead without having to flip through 800, 900 pages of material. So it basically gives you a Cliff Notes of the whole plan for the township. So that's, I think, is a very important tool. I'm kind of excited that we're doing it. The county provide this service for us at no cost, which is a benefit. This used to cost municipalities tens of thousands of dollars to do an official map and we're actually able to do that with just a little bit of assistance of our engineer and the help of the county and do it for fractions of that cost. So this is a, this is a great tool that we have this coming into place. The meeting with Pierre Akko, the planning commission, the planning commission members typically have two members of their board that usually sit in on the meetings with all developers. So it's not just the board working group, but it's also the planning commission's working group that sits in meeting with developers and those that wish to do projects on their properties. More often, it's not necessarily always developers. A lot of times, it's just local businesses that are looking to make some improvement to their property.
And Scott, I would add to that, a few years ago, we incorporated a yearly meeting with the planning commission and this year we decided to add to that and we should probably include that in our goals is to continue to meet with the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to add to the goal because we thought we had promised them that we would meet with them at least once a year and talk about where our areas in particular, our ordinances are a little deficient. And then the last item, as many of you are aware, the MPO six or seven years ago engaged a study of looking at Roarstown Road that was coupled with this Centerville project, interchange project, Centerville interchange project moved forward. Unfortunately, the Roarstown Road stagnated with their product, with that study. We've pushed the county to reengage the study and revamp it and they are now in the process of doing that. So that will be a ongoing goal for the planning and development group to keep the pressure on the county and on PennDOT to see that study come to fruition and actually identify projects that can be done to alleviate some of the traffic that's going through Roarstown and our village there.
This effort of reviewing goals has brought to my thoughts a need I believe the board should consider as a goal, but it would initiate with this committee. And that is that we identify all the flag lots, I guess I would call them, or small remaining parcels that are, say, over one acre or so that are surrounded by existing zoning and existing development and that we identify them and that we have some way to manage how they can be approved for use. There's, of course, we all familiar with one that's a current challenge in this regard and I believe. And I believe if we can identify them, we can determine how they can best be developed and manage that to possibly avoid conflict. They may all, well, they're probably owned already, but I think we would have the right to impose some zoning special requirements on them so that we can avoid the difficulties that can arise.
So basically the first step would be to review and identify the remaining vacant land south of 283.
Right, yeah, south of 283. The whole area above 283 is a big flag lot, so. So that's a thought that I had that, that might be considered and productive.
So we just call it review of vacant land south of 283.
Vacant land parcels, you know, it's, we know what ag holding is. I'm not considering the ag holding. It's these three, four, five acre, if there are any, and there must be a few. And I think if we can identify them, it could be helpful.
Anything else for the working group here at this point?
Yeah, do we want to include the revised sign ordinance or is that covered under number two there?
I would be number two.
Okay.
That's, that's an ongoing, the sign warrants is just one of the many things we're going to need to. One of the things we had put in our comp plan, which makes our comp plan unique is our comp plan, it actually is more of a business plan. Where typically a comp plan is just a planning document for development. Our comp plan, we took one step further and made it into a business plan for the township. And we create a series of principles, the strong town organism principles that we adopted and incorporated into our comp plan. And we also created a business section. And one of the things we talked about as one of our ongoing goals in our comp plan is to continue review of our ordinances, particularly our subdivision and zoning ordinances. And to periodically make changes and updates and not wait 10 or 15 years and then do the mom go, the large, super mega update that takes forever and costs a lot of money and but to kind of make updates as we go. And so that's, that's what that, that the sign ordinance, but there's other things that need to change too. And that, that's what we heard from our, our zoning hearing board when we met with them. We need to relook at our parking requirements related to residential or some other things that we need to kind of pay attention to. And that's also the reason why we should meet annually with our zoning hearing board to find out what some of the issues are that are occurring before them. So anything else for the planning group at this point? Okay, Ms., right, you're one step ahead of me. Okay, public safety, Mr. LeFever, because Wigglesworth, whoever wants to talk, you guys already threw the one thing you wanted to have on there.
Could you relay that so I can mark it down? Sorry.
Sure. So under, I'd say there should be an item number six. Or either expand item number four. We understand, or when it comes to fire services, we've desired or decided to make a a public investment in hiring a chief fire official. I think we should outline long-term goals for our fire services by the end of the year going forward. With, and I would also add underneath that, that a key component of that is that we need to maintain the volunteer fire volunteer model. And that's how I word it.
Thank you.
Anything else on the, the public safety at this point? You guys have had tremendous success with the Fire Services Committee that was created between the township, East Peak Borough and the three fire companies. And I commend you both for the amount of effort you put into that and all the work that has had to occur. Trying to get 30 different people to agree on anything is a very difficult position, especially when you're talking about volunteer services. There's, as critical volunteer services nonetheless. So I just wanted to commend that work that you guys have done, you've, that's in my mind been the hardest working group over the last year, just in terms of your work volume as well as difficult work that needs to occur.
I've been reading The Greatest Generation and in several places broke off acknowledges where a hero is reluctant to take his accolades and that it's the people that support him and his, his troops or his buddies who also, even those mostly those that made the supreme sacrifice. So in that context, I think it's appropriate that we would share that acolyte with staff because they've worked very hard to achieve what we've done so far. And we'll need them going forward, I'm very sure, because this, this has been a challenge and, and has its continuing efforts that we'll be needing to address.
Anything more on public safety at this point? Like I said, you guys have, that, that has been the, the most active group over the last year and you guys have tackled some amazing things and credit definitely to our manager and to Ms. Garber for the the work that's needed to occur as well as just getting the fire companies to work together as a team, which we've that in itself is a pretty incredible and neat thing to say. Okay, Ms. Garber, MS four, my favorite one. Mr. Weaver, I'll turn that one over to you as an engineer. Anything you wish to talk about on that one?
This one's just kind of a stay the course type of thing. I don't think either of us really had anything to add unless Mr. Wigglesworth did. It's basically, it's, what we have to do is laid out by DEP and some of the things are requirements on the township. And the other ones are just when residents bring a stormwater problem, we do the best we can to fix it. So I mean, that continues to be the case. We have some projects in the works and some future projects laid out on the official map. So, I mean, plenty of things to work on.
Might one of them be the Conestoga Greenways? I believe, I believe any, anything that would develop from that, that would be an asset to the township would be any MS four credits that we would garner from participation in that. So I guess it might be appropriate if this committee would initially field those matters and then bring them forward as they believe appropriate. So whether we add that as an item with identify or just leave it with number one, but
I would, I believe that was number one right now. I think that, that kind of covers covers at this point. It, the only real reason to do the Conestoga Greenway is for the MS four work.
Right.
Otherwise, it's a very expensive trail project. So I would agree with that. And obviously there's some financial issues and hurdles and funding things that need to be figured out for that project. And we need our other municipal partners to agree to shoulder some of the burden. So there's some a lot of legwork that's going to need to occur for that. Okay, if we could now move, well, I want to do one more plug too on MS four real quick. One thing that we are blessed as a community with is we have had two stream bank restoration projects that have been tackled by developer. And as we see other municipalities in the county have to impose stormwater fees or stormwater taxes or wherever you want to call them, we have been able to not have to do that in this township. Because of the work that's occurred with both the Lime Springs project and the Penn State project, which would have been the equivalent of about $4 million worth of tax paying dollars going to if we had done those projects ourselves. So most municipalities do not have the luxury of having the projects that we've had, had happen and have those projects actually occur where there's a flowing stream going through the site like we've had happen. And we are truly blessed by that, that we've gotten to really good water quality projects that count for MS four program for both this permit cycle and our next five-year permit cycle. And they're going to save our tax paying dollars a lot of money. So that's, that's a positive thing that makes the MS four working group a little bit easier to work with and some, what some of the other townships have to deal with right now. So Ms. Garber, if we can move on to public works, please?
Just to add to that, Mr. Chairman, I know there's not a lot of people paying attention right now. But to boil it down, the state has put down mandates and requirements upon municipalities, upon us. And oftentimes, business gets a black eye or gets painted as greedy. And we all know the drill on that. However, in this case, it's a great example of where the private sector can step in and help and do things more efficiently and better. And that's what's taking place here. So kudos to this board and, and to business really for stepping up to the plate.
And the big thing too is we came away with two very good projects. I mean, most of those MS four stormwater projects unfortunately really do very little for actually improving water quality and are high maintenance and cause a lot of problems and really a poor return on investment of tax paying dollars. These two projects do make an improvement to water quality. And again, we're done without tax paying dollars. So that's a win for everybody and definitely a win for our community. So public works, Mr. LeFever, you want to go over that?
Okay. We have our infrastructure needs. We've been working on that primarily with bridge repairs and maintenance and things. Street lights, I think we pretty well completed that except it's ongoing to do that. And I believe we've converted many, if not all of them over to LEDs. So we're pretty good shape on that, I believe. Cost effectively by outsourcing or in, or in-house, we have to continue to consider that. We've outsourced the vehicles which has, has reduced some of the maintenance need on our own. The windshield assessment, we'll, we'll manage and do that again come spring with Mr. Madonna. And preventive maintenance, we, we discuss that and consider that frequently to do the right things. Traffic calming and speed control, we work with continuously with the traffic commission. I feel we're making some headway with our thoughts of speed notices painted on the road clearly where they are seen and continue to evaluate speed bumps or tables or other measures. The one thing I don't think we have addressed here that has had a lot of lip surface, but again, we should develop a policy on curbs and sidewalks. Where we want them, where we don't want them and how we manage their replacement or some way that we have that we use experiences we've gained before. If we take a section and decide to eliminate them or if we believe that there's other solutions, but we, we don't really, that's the way we've been managing on a per case basis. But there could be some pitfalls in that. If we get claims of comparison between developments or precedent or those kind of challenges. So I think we might need to add a specific goal for finalizing the curb and sidewalk matter.
We could incorporate that with what we're doing with Church Street. Yes, our, our test project.
Yeah, and that has unique features that we can address, that it's in a village, they are existing already. And there's definitely a need for some stormwater management coming down that grade that is, is addressed by that, so.
I think you guys are getting a taste and you get more of a taste with Church Street when we have to send bills to residents about why I personally have been hesitant to putting sidewalk everywhere around the township. It does become a future maintenance liability for all those property owners. And I think there are places where sidewalk makes a ton of sense. And I don't think that necessarily applies to streets that have 30 or 40 vehicles a day on them. So as we move forward and we go through assessing residents to replace sidewalk along Church Street ahead of PennDOT's paving project and see the difficulty that those residents are going to have to actually do the maintenance on their sidewalks. I think that gives caution to everybody about imposing on future development sidewalks everywhere. Sidewalks have a cost. I think they have a lot of benefit in a lot of locations. But they don't need to be universally installed everywhere. And so there's, there's definitely a cost associated long-term with having and building sidewalk. So just over the years, as, as, as my role as an engineer and having to tell people they need to replace sidewalk, I've kind of developed a little bit of a different viewpoint on sidewalk than those that like to propose it going everywhere, but never actually had to tell somebody they need to pony up the expenses to replace it. So that's just my little soapbox. We're definitely gonna, it's the Church Street sidewalk replacement is in the $100,000 range for our, our resident, over $100,000 range for our residents and businesses that have to replace that small section of sidewalk. Now it is more expensive with it being along a state road, but definitely as we're developing a policy, we want to give that a little, a little thought and for people that think in the past, those areas where we've waived sidewalks, that we were just doing that for the benefit of the developer. That's not the case. Every time I've waived sidewalk, I'm thinking more of that future resident that has to replace it than what that developer's gaining by initially having it deferred or waived, so. Anything else on public works at this point? I think one thing too, just to do a plug, for the last 10 years, the township has put considerable additional money into paving the roads, basically catching up for our previous decades where we underfunded our roads as a township. I feel that we're getting to the point where we're getting, catching up and getting ahead on our roads now, which is a good place to be. And that's why you see goal number five. Now that started last year and is being continued. But we want to get to this point in the township after spending upwards of an extra $9 million paving our roads that we've done over the last 10 years, is we want to get a place where we have a preventive maintenance program that we are doing routine maintenance on these chip seals and other types of work on these roads, extending the lifespan of the roadways so that we don't have to have a future board someday engage in an expensive catch-up program like we've done for the last decade. So that's what the goal number five is. It's basically the concept called perpetual pavement. And the idea is to get your maintenance in your pavement in the state where your roads are in the maintenance mode, not when they're badly cracked and starting to fall apart. It costs a lot less to maintain roads at that level. Your residents have a better road system to drive on. And like I said, it's the best use of long-term for dollars. You don't have to have expensive catch-up layer with a specific road. So that's what goal number five is. So when you look at projects of maintenance job, if you look at reconstruction costing hypothetically a dollar, what we've been doing with these overlays is costing us about 50 cents. And when we do maintenance, it's costing us like a dime. So we want to keep, we want to keep our roads into more of a maintenance mode than a rehab mode that we've been doing for these last 10 years. And so that is what the goal is with Perry is to start shifting some of our funds now from rehab and going back to these roads that we've done over the last 10 years and giving them their first maintenance treatment. So that's, that's a long-term goal for public works. So anything else on public works? Any questions of the board? Okay, we open up to any questions or comments from the audience?
I do have another thought. 5G, should that be identified anywhere in particular for initial groping with what comes by our way and have a place of, of where we get recommendations and decisions in-house on that or?
For evaluating the ordinance, that would fall into the planning working group. So that's kind of, that goal kind of covers that. For what actually occurs, it would depend on what parts of our ordinance actually are still enforceable at this point. So the Crown Castle So if Crown Castle comes in and they want to hypothetically go into my neighborhood of Mill Creek and all of a sudden put a whole bunch of 5G facilities in where everything's underground, we actually have very little say in it because they have utility status now with the PUC. So there's, I don't want to give people false hopes of how much we can control or can't control. We actually, with the Supreme Court, Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruling that occurred a couple of months ago, we actually have very little control at this point with 5G. And there's lots of our, parts of our ordinance right now that some of the cell tower providers could simply just ignore us if we push too hard. So a lot of that was in our ordinance right now when it comes to a Crown Castle. And then the cell tower providers, not Verizon, not AT&amp;T, not T-Mobile, they still have to follow our ordinance. But the cell tower providers, quite frankly, could be just like Verizon. They can come in one day and move a pole, a telephone pole, and they don't even have to tell us or let us know what they're doing. So in terms of evaluating the effect of the ordinance, I mean, that would be the Planning Working Group in terms of its role, implementation, that would be probably staff just updating the whole board on how it's going at this point and what the issues are. So.
Using your development as an example, is there a way that we could have some control that instead of poles every 50 feet or whatever I've heard, that there could be a tower that takes care of your whole area there? That we would have say in that?
Now, the way I understand it now, once they got our utility status, we have absolutely zero leverage. It's, the ordinance almost becomes voluntary. Our best hope right now is that a Verizon and AT&amp;T or T-Mobile does not go to a Crown Castle and tries to do it themselves, because then we still have our ordinance in play. But if a Crown Castle were to come into one of our developments and say, we're doing this, we really don't have much of any leverage at this point. I'm looking at Cindy to correct me if I'm wrong.
We don't.
And anything I'm saying at this point.
In fact, we had those provisions in the, in the ordinance at one point, the distances, and they weren't allowed. We had to remove them.
So we just have to be careful with what we can. We actually don't want to press our cell tower, our three cell providers too hard with our current ordinance that we just adopted to the point where they say they're so difficult, we're just going to hand this over to Crown Castle, because Crown Castle doesn't have to follow the ordinance at all. So there's, there's, there's going to be a very fine line that we're going to have to walk as a township. We have a very, actually a relatively restrictive ordinance. And we're the only municipality that I'm aware of in Lancaster County that has any restrictions right now. So we're, by default, we have a restrictive ordinance that's more restrictive than any other municipality in the county right now. But if we press those three carriers too hard, I know what I would do if I was that carrier. I would call Crown Castle and say, how would you like to put up 50 or 100 of these 5G facilities in this development? East Endville Township is being too difficult on me right now. And so there's just, we just have to be careful with that, just keep that in the back of our minds. I think we have a very good ordinance. We have, we have an ordinance that is as restrictive as we're legally allowed to do at this point. And my hope is that we don't have Crown or somebody move into the township that we just deal with T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T with the restrictions that we got in our current ordinance.
I would just add to that, it's, while I hear what Mr. LaFever's saying, and I'm very tempted by it, it's, we would have no more ability to regulate PP&amp;L or any other utility in the right of way at this point. And I think I would tread cautiously on that.
Like I said, we have, we have a pretty restrictive ordinance. We do have some protection for co-locate requirements when there's underground facilities. And we want to try and keep Crown and others from moving in and try and keep it. We're, right now, as I'm aware, we're only dealing with the big three. We're not dealing with any of the cell tower providers. I've seen John nod his head. So that's the way we want to keep it. So as long as we can kind of keep a good working relationship with those three companies and keep the cell tower providers out, then we're going to have some say as to what's occurring in the township. At the moment, the cell tower providers move in and the big three move out, that's when we lose all say in the township. Anything else for board goals at this point? Okay, seen none. That is it for action names. And do we, I guess we could take a motion, might as well make it formal. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the board goals as discussed and modified. Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Schweitzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. The ayes have it, fine, nothing. And that's the last of our action names. Any old business? Okay, seen none. Any new business? Seen none. Traffic Commission, Mr. LaFever?
We had a meeting this evening, beginning at 6:00 PM. We clarified that there's a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Spring Valley Road. And the Public Works Group is prepared, when weather is appropriate, to paint the 25 mile per hour stenciling on the road, despite the fact that we will be paving sections of that road later in the summer and may need to do it again. But at least that's a, an effort that we've determined may help us to address the speeding there and maybe elsewhere in the township. We had a visitor from Penn State Health in that they have been thinking of a vaccination center at Cloister Road and Roystown Road, where there's a concern about left turn access to the site. To go back to the building supply company, and I forget what else is back in, in there behind the Safeway Service Station. But what was decided, we've approved measures to restrict left turn if necessary. At this point, Penn State is waiting to see the development at Park City of a countywide vaccination center. And they will yield to them, it's my understanding, if that's set up rather than have a second site. The other concern they have is if it's necessary, determined necessary to have flagger force control of that intersection, continuous flagger force control, economically, it's not feasible for them then to pursue that site. So that was the conclusion there for the time being for the possible development of that site. Other items that we still have pending, we're looking for residents at Sharon Drive to bring a petition forward if they wish to. We have sent a letter to PennDOT for reducing speed through Landisville to 25. We are awaiting McMahon to respond to the Shank Road. And Mr. Madonna reports that he has ordered the stencils and the speed indicator sign approved at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. We did take an action to authorize the Chief Skiles and Mr. Madonna to determine an extent of no parking at the crest of the hill on Harrisburg Pike at the dental office on the east side of Landisville to eliminate a hazard there for visibility. And that concluded what we did at Traffic Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaFever.
We'll move on to Development Services. It seems a little light right now.
I'm gonna highlight the, the changes that have occurred since the last month. The board acknowledged the official map and authorized staff to send that to the County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission. It has been accepted by the County Plan Commission for review. And we should have their review back in either middle or late, late March. And it is going to the Township Planning Commission for their first round of reviews at the March 10th Planning Commission meeting. The, moving on to Sallow Projects, the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center in Brookside project at State Road, the supervisors conditionally approved the revised preliminary plan in Brookside Enterprise Phase Six Plan at the January 20th meeting. And since that time, the Sheets Plan, the Phase Two Sheets Plan has been recorded. State Road Commerce Park, the supervisors conditionally approved the revised preliminary plan and the revised final plan at the January 20th meeting. An update on the Turkey Hill Project at Centerville and Old Tree Drive. The township engineer completed his review of a new submission that we received that is a revision to the plan. I want to clarify, it is not a revised plan, it is just a revision. The revision removed the car wash use and added the Lancaster City Water Pump Station. 701 Stony Battery Road. At this time, the developer submitted a sidewalk deferment agreement for township solicitor review. Township staff is, has sent out a, an email to, to meet with the developer, their attorney and their engineer, to discuss installation of the trail on Stony Battery rather than proceed with the deferment. We're hoping to kill two birds with one stone, if I can use that analogy, to get 701 and 791 to install their trail network and start that process of getting the trail connected from Nolte Road all the way up to Kaufman. Speaking of 791, the supervisors approved the, conditionally approved the final plan for that project at the January 20th meeting. Traditions of America, we received the signed plans today. And pending the outcome of supervisor signatures tonight, that plan and the agreements will get recorded for TOA Phase Two. They should get recorded tomorrow or Friday, if not early next week. 3072 Nolte Road, the cluster development, the township engineer is finalizing his second review for the preliminary plan. 2260 Dairy Road Billboard, supervisors approved a conditional use for the billboard on the property at 2260 Dairy Road. Kellogg's has submitted their stormwater plan application, and we received it on February 2nd, February 12th, 2021. We have also received the final plan application for Duckling's Daycare at 3101 Yellow Goose Road. And we've received the final plan application for Ironstone Building Materials on Geno East Drive.
Any questions for Mr. Beck? Okay, we will move on to manager's report.
So you received a copy of my report. In addition to that, I just want to point out a few things. Centerville Road, we are moving forward with 13 properties for declarations of takings. So that's going to be an action item on your future agenda regarding an ordinance, I believe, that is required that goes along with those to take them to court. They still have time to handle the settlement with our right-of-way agent. But, and we have had some calls, so that, that was fruitful. Farmingdale Road, we continue to work on those right-of-ways property. We have six properties that need right-of-way along Marietta Avenue. I have not heard from Mr. Bauer, but the plan was that that will be bid in March. So I'm sure that he's working toward that. I have not heard anything more about the highway occupancy permits that has not yet been issued. State Road's pretty much shut down for the season. We did have two executive sessions between meetings. There was an executive session on 23, less from 8:15 to 8:40, and it was a discussion of personnel matters. Also on 212, from 8:05 to 8:43, it was a discussion of potential litigation. Moving to group reports, there's a few things in here that are going to be coming before you in a future meeting, so I figured I should review them with you. The group discussed the DCNR grants resubmission. We'd like to expand that submission to include pickleball courts. We're working with our engineer currently to see if they can incorporate that into the grant application to justify it and also to keep it within the funding caps. That's going to eventually need to come before the board for approval for that submission, which I believe is in April. We also discussed pickleball play for 2021. Because we'd like to add the grant, that pickleball is to the grant, we felt that the resident that had concerns about the pickleball play last year will have the same issue for the next year, possibly two, until the grant is approved. And what the committee is going to be recommending is that the, the group play with a quiet ball. It's a softer ball that does not make quite as much noise. They will, they were not in favor of that when we posed that to them last time. So we will need some board backing on that because they're not going to be happy about it. But we felt that was a concession. If we're putting it in the grant, then this will ease the pain of the property owner, hopefully.
Can I just ask, so we're recommending that they go with a different ball?
Correct.
Is it, who's recommending that?
The group, the park and rec group.
Is recommending, on one hand, we're, we're talking about including the pickleball courts in the DCNR grant at a different location in the park that will allow them to play. Sort of as a compromise, we're asking them to play with a quiet ball until that point, until that happens. We think we will get some pushback. But.
Players claim, or the players say that it affects the game. So our, part of our discussion was that there are other places to play, and some of them charge money, whereas we don't. And we didn't want to be charging either. But we felt that they can give a little bit and play with a different ball was our recommendation.
So would this just be for tournaments or league play? Or would this be for anybody that shows up there?
This is all recreational play to begin with. There's no league play. There's no really highly competitive activity going on with this. It does, the new ball does change the game a little bit, but it doesn't change the fundamentals of the game enough to really impact the situation.
It's, it's, we'll probably post it with signage, and it's probably going to turn into a police matter to be truthful with you.
I just, I don't know, there's alarm bells going off in my head, like, is that the right course that we should be taking?
I think that that's certainly something that we should talk about. It's a, that's, that's a recommendation that we made to you all. Now, if you feel differently, I mean, that's, we're not going to be offended.
Right. My only concern is it's a resident, and I understand, I've, I heard the complaint, and I sympathize greatly with her, but it's one person that lives next to a park. And would we change out a basketball to make it quieter? Or would we change out?
Well, we have made, we have taken steps to make it quieter by moving the location of the courts currently.
Right.
On, on the McAdam. But that may or may not be enough.
I just, I think it's an awful lot to do for one. I just, I just have a concern, and where does it stop? You know, where, next time, you know, people don't, we had this come when we did the trail around the park. You know, people didn't want the trail at the edge of the park because it went too close to their properties, and they could hear people talking. You know, we made some reasonable accommodations in moving benches to the corners. But I just have a concern, when you live next to a park, this is a park activity. And whether it be basketball or pickleball or football or soccer games in the morning, where, you know, what's reasonable and what's not. That's my only comment.
This is not something we're taking any action on right now anyways.
No, it has to be an action item with the board. So give it some thought.
I'm sure that we'll have the pickleball group showing up. I'm sure that we'll have the pickleball group showing up in numbers. Okay.
As was mentioned earlier, also, we did talk to, I did talk to DMA and they are gonna be doing a proposal to incorporate a master plan of all the parks. Which includes Noldor Ward, um Jacobs Creek and Wheatland Hills. And it's gonna be not as, not to the level of Amos Her Park, but it will give us some guidance in terms of what's there. And then we can start planning from that point and take individual parks and, and turn them into something like, not turn them into, but uh, plan for them like we did for Aher. Also mentioned tonight was the fee schedule. You don't have a fee schedule yet before you. Uh, we're still working off the twenty twenties. We did have a meeting with uh the planning group, planning department. And we really are going to revamp the, the fee schedule in terms of how it looks. Some of the changes, some, some of the fees will be consolidated, some will be increased. And that revamp also includes park and rec. And we already did a survey uh for other parks and rec fees. So uh, we're kind of doing a comprehensive look at the fee schedule. So it might be another meeting or two before you'll see that before you for action. The Public Works Group met, uh Scott discussed, we, we uh, he discussed the, the county corridor visioning and strategic assessment, which includes the seven forty-one. So we'll hear more about that as they progress along. We also discussed the funding assistance to property owners on Church Street. In your packet on the table, you have a uh spreadsheet that I did share with the group, which outlines DMA put together cost estimates for the project based on prevailing wage rates. And then based on private contractor rates, based on current estimates. And the difference is, the cost for prevailing wage is about a hundred and sixty-two thousand. If we, a private contractor did that work for sidewalks and curb, be a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred. The difference is forty-six, five. The group uh would like the board at some point in the future, not tonight, to consider uh taking care of that cost difference between prevailing wage and private contractor. I can't guarantee those numbers because they're just estimates, but in, in concept, the board would pick up the cost between the difference of the two. You will notice at the very bottom, there's ADA curb ramps. That's fifteen thousand. That is the township cost. So the, the number you're looking at is about thirty-two thousand dollars uh cost difference at this point.
Think what that, that goes back to my original point that sidewalk has costs. And every, you can see what it costs. A typical resident for one, just replacing a five yard sidewalk is looking at a bill about four or five thousand dollars. For just your typical lot in the township. Um, so that is what the long-term maintenance costs are for sidewalk for residents in the township when they so twenty years from now, that four or five thousand dollars could be fifteen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars to replace that, that sidewalk with inflation kicking in. Uh, so there, there are real costs. And so when we, as we approve things and we look at things. We need to be smart and judicious about where facilities are put in and where facilities are not put in. So, cause this is, this is the real world of cost, the way it costs to maintain it.
So. Beating a dead horse, but back to pickleball, there is the question of enforcement. And I think if we say softballs, it's going to get ignored by some, maybe many. And our police and staff don't have that to add to their agenda. I think we either have pickleball courts or we don't. And I think we have made concessions to the, to the property owner. And that's a compromise. I'm just concerned about an enforcement issue in a park that should have freedom.
So, but on the uh, the public works side, we're, we're not asking for, um, this is, this will be, you guys just need to look over and think about it. I don't think we wanna get in the business of owning everybody's sidewalk. Um, unless we wanna plan a pretty big tax increase at this point. Uh, it's, it's just like buying a property um that's zoned a certain way. And we're buying next to a property that's zoned a certain way, whatever it might be. You, you, you're buying into something you know you're responsible for. And so when people bought their homes, they either knew or they didn't know, but they were basically buying that sidewalk and buying that curb uh when they bought their property. And the maintenance responsibilities that go up with it versus anything from having to replace it to all the way down to having to shovel it every time it snows. That's the, the price you pay for um living on a, a street like that. Usually this, that, the streets that do have sidewalk are your more densely pop, densely uh populated areas of the township. And you do have a, a, a pretty decent amount of walking that's occurring. So we're gonna have to, I think there's a fine balance, a strike between fairness, which is uh, a resident is responsible for the maintenance of their facility that they bought with their property. And the inflated costs that occur with living along a state road. Um, and that's um you, you kind of get that when you buy a property too, but I don't think people really understand what the additional costs are of buying a property that's along a state road until they actually have to do something and deal with Penn Dot. Um, and then they find out how much, how expensive it is. And then Scott, with your background, which the old saying is, you have a family of four, you never buy a house with a double yellow line in the street in front of your house. There's a reason why that saying exists. Um, so um, but I, I, do you think we had to, we had to figure something out and that goes back to what Mr. LaFever was saying with a long-term goal of, of the plan for our sidewalk and curb in the township. Uh, boroughs have been dealing with this for years, as has the city. And their position has always been, it's the homeowner's responsibility, the property owner's responsibility uh for those facilities. Now, finally sidewalk and curb is starting to get deteriorated in townships. Um, and now we're gonna be facing the same thing that boroughs and cities have been dealing with for decades now. And so we do.
The ownership of a sidewalk and that they're mandated to clean the stow off of them within a certain period of time. So it's their property.
So that goes back to your, Mr. LaFever's desire to have that as a, a public working group goal. I, I think that's a, something that we definitely need to hammer out and get up on our website and, and teach people. And there's even certain things that residents can do to, to their sidewalk and to their curb that will make it last a lot longer. And if, once you start realizing that you're responsible for something that's gonna cost a lot to replace in the future, you might be more inclined to fill some of those cracks. Uh, and do some of that other maintenance work that should be done on sidewalk and curb and not just let something go. Anything else, Ms. Switzer?
Uh, just the admin finance. Just wanted to point out that we are doing some analytics on the meeting attendance. I think we can all agree that they went up, but uh, we're gonna put it down in a little graph and chart just to, to share with you. Just wanna also mention, we did it, uh, I attended as well as Ed LaFever and Scott Russell attended the last L I M C meeting. Uh, DA Heather Adams uh discussed the um DTF process. Her funding uh needs and goals. She felt that there, she felt that there were sufficient funds for twenty twenty-one, but also pointed out that they still need to develop a long-term funding plan for that. Um, also on your agenda sometime in the future will be the COG. Uh, after Ed, Ed was at the last COG meeting uh in East Petersburg. After he left, he had to leave early. Uh, they did discuss about the need for the COG. So that's probably needs some discussion of the board just so that they can, the representatives can go back to the COG to uh talk about that. That's all.
I just wanna give a uh, a plug for our new district attorney and the amount of effort she has put into revamping the drug task force. Um, and um, the work she's been doing to try and secure a different funding mechanism than the one that has been in place for the last couple decades and the fine path of navigating all the politics that are involved with that. Uh, she's done a wonderful job. Um, also wanna give a uh compliment to Commissioner DiAgostino uh for his outreach to, to the local government. So after the last couple of years and hitting the low point two years ago with everything that was going on between the, the Board of Commissioners and the District Attorney and uh LCATs and everybody else, uh, things are looking a lot better now. And we're not where we need to be, but at least we're trending in the right direction. So. Anything else for Ms. Switzer? Okay. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on a non-agenda item? I'm seeing none. So with that, I promise after the last couple of meetings gone super long, we are going to be adjourning our meeting at eight eighteen.
Where also trash is delayed tomorrow and Friday, in case you have pickup. Changed that about an hour later. They are now delayed or they're postponed. Yep. Mama is closed.